Started with the North Hurocks Community Council meeting of. Before we get started, we do have to make an announcement on an agenda item. We have to move the agenda item. Town of Atherton and San Mateo County Transportation Authority El Camino Real. Issue to a date in the future. We are not going to have that presentation tonight. So just scratch that from your agenda. I believe you're ready to get started.
Vice Chair George Sammons.
President.
Councilmember Juan Carlos Prado.
President.
Councilmember Everado Rodriguez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Niket Cersei.
President.
Councilmember Brooks Esser.
Here.
Councilmember Blair Whitby.
Also here.
Councilmember Kelly Parisi. Councilmember Mariela Peralta. Chair Catherine Daley.
Here.
A brief announcement if you have an. Join us this evening in the back. For those of you joining us in person, if you would like to listen to this meeting in Spanish. Please use the heads up provided at the checking table. Would you like to provide these instructions in Spanish, Francisco?
Si ustedes quisieran interpretar con el español, aquí estamos ofreciendo los servicios de interpretación.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, now it's time for public comment. As you all know. The public comment can only be up to two minutes and it can be about any topic that is not on the agenda. So if it's on the agenda, please wait until we present that. Otherwise, anyone here for a public comment. You have two minutes and if you haven't filled out speaker slip, please do. And once again, the council cannot take any motions or discussion about anything. We can just hear what you have to say tonight. Any public comment? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move forward with item agenda number three. Recommendation or motion, a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding a request for a certificate. Of public convenience or necessity relating to the Loop neighborhood market, which is that thirty-two oh one El Camino Real in Atherton. And there's your application for alcohol beverage license. Come here. Deputy attorney is going to present. Tim, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll briefly orient you to the issue and the process. And then we'll be available for any questions. And I believe that a representative of the applicant is also present and we should make a comment as well. As you probably know, in order to sell alcoholic beverages in the state of California, you need permission from the state. Generally called a liquor license, which is issued by a state agency called the Division of Alcoholic Beverage Control or ABC. So when a person wants to initiate this as part of their business, they apply to the ABC. For a liquor license, and that is a process that happens separate from any county decision making. When an applicant is applying to sell liquor in an area that has been determined by the ABC. To have something called an over concentration of liquor licenses already issued. Based on population in that particular census tract, the ABC refers the application back to a local land use agency. In this case, the county. To ask whether or not the issuance of the license would serve the public convenience or necessity. And that's a phrase that I want to repeat again so that you're aware of the standard that we're applying. Would issuance of the license serve the public convenience or necessity? You are in a role of making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Over your knowledge and information about the neighborhood, about the community, about its needs. And to recommend to the Board of Supervisors whether you believe that the issuance of a liquor license in this area. Would serve the public convenience or necessity. You don't have to make that recommendation. You're given the opportunity to weigh in on the question. And you can make comments and explain your thinking as well. And that information will make its way into a staff report that will be presented to the Board of Supervisors. Either recommending a finding that it would serve the public convenience or necessity, or potentially making a recommendation. That it does not serve the public convenience or necessity. So your role again tonight is to reflect. The concerns of the community, the interests of the community about liquor licenses. Not as a general matter, but whether or not this particular area would be better served by having an additional liquor license or not. That's the overarching question for the council. I believe some reverison from the planning department is available online. Would be available online if there are questions about planning aspects of this. But again, it's not fundamentally a planning question. It's really more. The state of California has asked us as a local jurisdiction to give them advice about whether or not the local community would be served. In its convenience or necessity by a liquor license being granted in this instance. And just by way of information. The census tract in which this application is pending. Has three allowed liquor licenses based on calculated population, as I understand it. And the state has issued twelve. So there are twelve licenses existing in the census tract where three are ordinarily.
Is this the same license for stores it is for restaurant or bar?
They are issued by the same entity, but you apply for either an onsite or an offsite license and various kinds of licenses. I have to admit, I'm not an expert in this area, but as I understand it, there's a fundamental difference. Service of alcohol for consumption onsite and carryout. And I believe this is an application for onsite.
The twelve licenses that you mentioned, are those part of a bundle of restaurants, bars, stores, everything?
The information that I have does not distinguish about whether the twelve consist of mostly offsite or onsite or what the balance is. I don't have that information.
I've been working with attorney's office on that and the twelve is the offsite only.
Okay, so just like a store essentially.
And just to clarify, the location is at the corner of Fifth and.
The show. The Loop.
Yeah, okay.
It's a gas station.
Yeah, that's okay.
And you said three would be allowed.
In this census tract, according to the ABC's calculation, and I don't have much information about the way in which they make the calculation. They said that three are allowed.
Okay.
This may be a question more for the applicant, but is there anything significantly different about what they're offering versus the liquor stores in nearby areas?
I think that would be better directed.
We'll have an opportunity to ask the applicant later or.
Sure, I believe that the applicant's representative is present.
Any other questions in council?
Yeah, through the chair. Is a license being seeked only beer and wine or hard alcohol sales? I.
From what I recall reading, it was hard alcohol, but it was limited on percentage of the sales and timelines where they had served it.
So it's beer, wine and hard alcohol?
I believe so. That's what I.
I think those canned cocktails that are becoming very popular now.
Hard seltzer.
Hard seltzers and canned cocktails.
Yeah, there was a presentation that we received. On behalf of the.
The request that was filed was for a permit to allow the sales of beer, wine and distilled spirits for offsite consumption. Which the ABC calls a type twenty-one license. And there's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Two or three census tracts in Northern Hurocks. Three. So I did some reading today and found that state guidelines are basically one license for every twenty-five hundred residents. So that kind of follows with what you're suggesting with three licenses being allowed in a tract where we probably have five, six thousand residents that. That makes sense. And you're saying we have twelve licenses.
Are they all being utilized? Just because they are.
All active.
The other point I have is when it comes to like the concentration of licenses, if I understand correctly, Loop is right across the parking lot. Chavez Market, I believe. Atherton, you save, I think it's right up.
Half a block away.
Literally across Fifth, there's another one right there on the corner.
Behind the Jack in the Box. And that's a pure liquor store.
And then K and L is not too much farther. So there's a, there's a concentration there. If you get out to Middlefield, Fifth, we've got Big Bottle and Stop.
Shut down. There was one that shut down somewhere in that area, right? Recently. Anyway, I know there's like also Menlo down a couple of blocks.
Well, I think Blair had no question. Go ahead.
I'll wait.
Okay, my question was. So the license goes to the business and if the business goes out of business, the license ends there, correct? Or can somebody else get into that place and inherit that license?
Yeah, I'm afraid that's, thank you. I don't practice in this area.
I just been working on this recently before we received the application for that one, but. You asked, oh, so the person, if the business goes, if the, yeah, because out of business, they could transfer itself. The license.
Okay.
So if they could be moved to someone else.
Right, yeah. My recollection, you know, for the eight plus years that I've been in the council. And living in this community for close to thirty years is that, you know. There are way too many alcohol licenses in this community and, you know, right along El Camino Real. Just that section, you can find plenty of opportunity for, you know, convenience if you're looking for alcohol. Whether that's in the form of a pure liquor store or a restaurant for that matter, or a bar. And so I'm always reluctant to. To accept more alcohol licenses for the same reason. Yeah, that's my two cents.
Before we move to a deliberation phase, I would definitely recommend that you take public comment. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but then you should do public comment and then deliberate.
Okay.
I do have a question in terms of policy and enforcement. So the license just allows for the sale of it, but it doesn't talk about how it's going to be enforced. Like being carried off. Like I noticed in the, the subsequent documentation that we see, they said they're going to put signs and things like that, but. Is there any enforcement to ensure that like consumption doesn't happen, literally like one step up property or things like that?
The sheriff's department is supposed to, if you're drinking in your car in front of the liquor store. That's your enforcement, the sheriff's department.
So the sheriff would have to be there or if you walk, try walk right off of it and then open up there. That's. So it's all sheriffs related or?
It's a complicated question. Commissions of crimes such as having an open container of alcohol on a public street, for example. That would be enforced by the sheriff against the person that is committing that crime. Regulatory or administrative action against a liquor license for violating the terms of the license is generally a matter for the ABC. Which has its own infrastructure for investigating the behavior of licensees and their compliance. And then there's a layer of, you know, we have code compliance for matters relating to use permit. So if we were to apply for a conditional use permit and conditions were imposed on that permit, then there would also be. Responsibility on the part of our code compliance division to ensure that, that those particular conditions are being complied with. So it really isn't an overarching question of one person having jurisdiction over it. It would be each party having jurisdiction over their piece of it. Got it?
Last question for me. And I don't know if we even have a doubt here for this one. Do we have any idea? What type of crimes we will typically see around liquor storefronts in this area that what the police department might already be getting? And. If they're surrounding area around it, if it's higher concentration of crime in the liquor stores as opposed to the other areas. Just curious to see if we have any data for that.
I don't know.
The sheriff is also allowed to comment on these applications. But I don't have the.
I think, I think my comments are for the deliberation phase. I've got like.
Okay.
Thoughts and feelings, but it's not going to be like a Q and A with an applicant.
Okay, so why don't we move on to public comment? The applicant is here, so you do have two minutes.
Yeah, Steve Rollings, you have two minutes.
Do you need me to speak in the microphone?
What's that?
Do you need me?
Anyway, you should turn it on though.
It's on the bottom.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Hey, good evening. My name is Steve Rollings and as I know that I had sent a post to you an email because I know that we're strapped for time here, so to speak. I wanted to, you know, talk to you just a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish as Loop Market. Loop Market is part of a large organization that has hundreds of stores in the state of California and. We are trying to license most of those stores to be able to sell alcohol because we have an overwhelming demand by our customers. The customers like to be able to stop and get gas. And we all know that it takes, you know, five minutes or so to get gas and many times they come into the. Convenience store and that might be for coffee if it's an awarding, but oftentimes they would like to make purchase of, sometimes purchasing milk. Sometimes they would like to be able to be able to purchase, you know, beer, wine or possibly a distilled spirit. So. Our objective here is not to become a liquor store by any stretch of the imagination. We do have to go through a conditional use permit process. Which does allow the county opportunity to, you know, place some controls above and beyond what might be at ABC. And we've done this in many, many, many different communities. I did want to touch on one subject that was brought up and it is about the over concentration section. The, as you pointed out, it's one per twenty-five hundred. It's a mathematical formula that is applied up and down the state and it may be one to twenty-five hundred here in San Mateo County, but Riverside County or Sacramento County. It's going to be a different ratio. I don't want to bore you with that, but I will be honest with you, almost every census tract that our stations are located in. And quite honestly, every place like a grocery outlet or every place like a pharmacy. Is in an over concentrated census tract. And the reason for that is very simple is because that's where the commercial properties lie. There's a lot of census tract that don't have any commercial properties there. So guess what? There's not one outlet that sells any alcohol there. So it's grossly under concentrated in some, some respects. So this particular situation is not uncommon. I would submit to you that it is a convenience to our customers because. And I have four sons and, you know, after work, I need to get gas. I really don't want to have to make a second, second trip. I'm already there. Time is valuable to so many people there. We're not, we're not going to be inventorying a massive amount there. We. You know, self-regulate and we just want it to be able to, as a convenience to our customers. And, you know, the statute is convenience or necessity. And in this particular case, we have a lot of customers coming in and we can every day wanting to be able to simply buy a bottle of wine or a six pack of beer. To, you know, responsibly consume at home. I mentioned that it's a big corporation. I mentioned that because we have a lot of policies and procedures in place. And one of those policies and procedures is that our managers are going outside to see what the activity level is. And when we see bad behavior, bad watering and things like that, we're instructed to call the police department. Because our customers want a clean, safe place to come and, you know, fill up with gas. And we would just simply like the privilege of being able to sell this. Our request for the beer, wine and distilled spirits, as I mentioned in an email to everybody, is really being driven by these ready to serve. The truly's and the wine clause are very, very popular. But they also come out with a product that contains distilled spirits. A very tiny amount because the alcohol by volume is not much different than what a beer is and actually is far less than what a traditional wine is. But ABC requires that we have a twenty-one license. If we do inventory bottles of alcohol, it's behind the cashier. It's a very, very small display. And sometimes we may not even exercise that. So that is what our request is and we have been open to, you know, conversations with people about. You know, maybe just selling beer and wine. We self-regulate our hours. We're not interested in the one thirty beer runs. Not at all. That's, we do not want that. There are other places that people can do that. We are a convenience store first and foremost, and that's what we're going to continue to be. And I don't want to go too much over time. I'm looking at your clock and I know that I'm way over time, but I'm more than happy. Did I get next to three minutes?
No, three minutes over.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. I, there's a lot I could download. I think that the company that I'm representing is a very, very responsible retailer and they're trying to be able to satisfy customer needs. And I know that there's other places in the community that has this product, but I think that will serve it in a very responsible manner. And it's really designed to add convenience to our customers. So with that, thank you very much for your consideration. And also I want to let everyone know that there is a conditional use permit that is being processed and we will not get this license issued. If the PCN is approved, we don't get the license issued unless the CEP is approved. And that's where there'll be conditions placed on us to ensure that our operations are clean. And so thank you very much. I'm sorry for going so long, folks.
Kind of order. If you've got two live mics, maybe it causes that feedback. So in the future.
And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Jim, is it fair to say we can, he, and council members can ask him questions?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, all right. Council members have questions. Nickan?
First question I have, thank you very much for the information. Do you have any data on how many customers request? Beer, wine or the spirits, or is this just kind of a corporate strategy plan or market?
Well, we get people in all the time asking, you know, when they're, if we have beer, I mean, there is. Beer and the seltzers are still the most popular products that are being offered. And now that the seltzers have turned into the distilled spirits, that's kind of in that same particular category.
Do you have any data around how much, how many people ask specifically for this location?
I don't know, but they were, if they were going to have asked their customers to start doing a kind of a petition. So that we could track some of that data, but they tell me it's like every day.
From existing location that already has a liquor beer license, do you know what percentage of your income and profit range or gross net income is?
It will, it will be about two to three percent. And I say that, that, you know, in the convenience store business. We don't make much money on the gas. The oil companies keep most of that. So you have to attract people into your store. Coffee is a very profitable item, as we can all imagine there and enjoy selling coffee, but there are other items there too that can help on the bottom line.
One last question. I believe it was maybe in your email that you mentioned that, that this company has several locations that do not sell alcohol as well. And it was a majority, I think. So, so, so I guess my question is not all these. Business locations. Need to have an alcohol license or they don't necessarily have it. I said this right now. Is that right? The majority don't have it.
What they've seen, the trend has been in the last several years is that they have been seeing the road in customer basis, all the stores that do not offer. That kind of product because of preference, other gas stations that do have that. And the ready to serve thing has driven almost every company I'm working. My existence is because this company would like to have all of their locations have that. You can't do it overnight. It takes a little bit of time, but I've been working with them for a number of years. Think we have about a third of the stores at this point in time and we're trying to add it, you know, in a systematic type of way. And every other gas station, convenience store is also trying to add the type twenty-one for this particular product. But recent years, I think maybe due to COVID because people started shopping at convenience markets more during COVID. And now they've become a little bit more discerning that. The stores that have that product. Do better in terms of customers and we found that we, the stores that we don't have were.
Not sure if this question is directed to you or for our team as well. But you mentioned the census data, the track data for getting your license changes by area. The reason why most of these regions where you're at, they're already taken is because of all the commercial real estate. Do we track census data based on the residents that live there or also by employees that. That work in commercial? Is it just?
Population data, if you're going to call it population data, it's usually tied to listings.
Just residents, okay. All right, that's different.
And I do, you know, make the point that. Obviously, we're in a particular census tract, but people that live in other census tracts drive by our gas station and so.
Sure.
I mean, it is a lighter swath and I've seen it in some communities where there's only one census tract that's over concentrated and every other one around it has no licenses. So if you look at a bigger area, and this is a unique situation here. I did look, I think there's a census tract and I'm pointing in the wrong direction, but I did notice that they had no. Alcohol establishments, but when I looked on Google Earth, it was because it was all homes. But I'm sure that those folks do come into the census tract to, you know, make purchases.
Sorry, do you want to go ahead?
No, I just would prefer we deliberate and not just have a back and forth with the applicant.
I just wanted to get, I guess, two questions. First question was, how many of your locations have a similar configuration like this? Where it's basically a gas each on a corner of a grocery store with, in a major intersection like that? A kind of setup versus a more standalone and area where there isn't as much around the space and that becomes a central point?
Well, without being able to give you exact numbers, it's very, very common that they have. Are operating on a corner where it's a, like a supermarket drug type of shopping center, which we've all been accustomed to. And this isn't exactly that configuration, but it's somewhat similar to that. And I do submit to everybody that, you know, you're there at the gas station for five minutes. It would be really convenient to be able to make that purchase rather than get in the car. Even if you're driving a hundred and fifty feet away, you got to get back out of the car, go find it, sit into a line and. That's what we're trying to help.
And then as a follow-up on that, I noticed in your presentation, you mentioned that Loop is trying to redefine the convenience stores and create like salad bars and dine-in and wifi. From what I recall in this location, it's not nearly that big in order to have all that facility and convenience there. Is that part of a future plan to create like almost like a restaurant deal or like a. Like what, almost like a roadside stop or a truck stop type deal where you have a room like play area or space?
They certainly are trying to do that and I, and I know some of their locations that are the store. I think I worked on one store that's almost. Six thousand square feet. This one is right under two thousand and quite honestly, it's tough to replicate what we can do in a. You know, three, four, five thousand square foot as we can here, but. Pretty tight where it is, but I try to.
If I understand it right, the goal is really just convenience and you're basically trying to add to the sales by adding the alcohol sales to a person going in a quick run in. Or whatever they, when they're paying for the gas.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
So we can.
Enough deliberation, sure.
Is there other comment we need to?
I don't believe there's any.
So I've got some thoughts and feelings about this and this is actually how we're supposed to work is. Talk out loud and share our thoughts and feelings and come to a consensus. It's considered blight if you got nothing but corner liquor stores in your neighborhood and you look like Compton or parts of San Francisco, like the Tenderline. North Hurocks doesn't feel like that, although we have this little entertainment district down Middlefield and with the bars. You know, it's a little bit sketchy, but I live on that side. The, there's a liquor store at Dunbarden. There's one by the Jack in the Box. The two wine stores, the one in Atherton and the one in our jurisdiction, that's a totally different demographic. It's a different feel. The wine crowd are Tesla BMW drivers and they're not drinking in the parking lot and, you know, breaking bottles and doing all that stuff. This gas station. This gas station shut down and rebuilt itself. And it's actually a nice gas station with a drive-through car wash. That's an amenity, just having a gas station in the community. And a lot of owners shut down because it's not of a high margin business, but they they invested in the community and they're actually good neighbors. You can ask to use the restroom and they'll let you use the restroom, even if you're not buying gas. You can pump up your bike tire. It's a plus for the community having a gas station here and they they get along with people. As far as alcohol, I don't drink personally, but I'm kind of a libertarian. And I think that, you know, it's out there. People are going to get it somewhere or the other. El Camino is a huge corridor and people are coming from or going to a lot of different places. It would capture business. People aren't going to like stop and go to the supermarket if they can get the the beer on the way home. I'm not. I'm not opposed to it on moral grounds that alcohol is evil. I I actually think it's okay. And I don't feel like this location is going to invite blight as far as like people drinking in the parking lot. It's it's very well lit and it's policed. So it's up to the board of supervisors. It's up to the state of California. We don't even have to take a stand, but I would either be neutral or be in favor of it. Because this is our world and it's as far as outlets, it's fairly nice compared to the corner liquor stores. They are very busy. The one on Middlefield down here, just around from Fifth Avenue. The one on Dunbarden in my neighborhood is horrible to get into and out of, but that's kind of busy. And there's a market for it.
I I tend to agree with you from a libertarian standpoint of consenting adults want what they want. They're going to get it from somewhere. From a safety standpoint, and this is just me guessing, I really don't know the data, that's why I asked for earlier. I just don't know what kind of crimes come within the liquor store facilities of having them. What kind of calls the police get more, if any, maybe they are yet none. I don't know. But that's just what what's on my mind from a safety standpoint. That's it. From a drinking standpoint, people drink. It doesn't bother me. I'm probably abstaining on this one.
Nick?
So just want to say I'm also kind of in two minds about this. Same idea. I'm all for the business trying to improve sales and generate revenue and prove itself. And I said it's a fairly nice facility. But the part of me is that knowing what I know in in terms of having gone through that area and stuff. I don't want it to fall out because people maybe drink something. I see bottles on the street and some of these other areas where, again, it is a crime, but now we're talking about enforcement and getting the sheriff in there and things like that. So that and then the traffic concerns, again, that intersection is absolutely horrid. If you're driving and trying to get in with people going into the various parking lots and spaces. So I don't think it's going to increase traffic. And in terms of the crime, I don't think there'll be any actual additional crime, given that there's already facilities and stores in that area. It's more about the environment and the cleanliness and making sure that things are policed. And, you know, I know we said that they're not going to be allowed to drink in the parking lot. There's not even room to really drink in the parking lot, but it's more like somebody will buy it, buy something, take it, drop the bottles, maybe half a block away or on the way and stuff like that. So that's that's really my only concern is just, is this going to add more to some of the litter that we see in that area? And if so, what can we do about that to to take care of it? I I guess I'm like you said, I'm really on two minds on this one.
Brooks, any comments? Any thoughts?
No, I think questioning, like my questions have been answered.
Carlos?
Likewise.
Ever?
Yeah, you already mentioned, you know, some of my worries about more liquor licenses in general, considering the background of our of our community. And, you know, I don't believe that, you know, alcohol is evil, evil or anything like that, you know. I don't have a pure technical stand on it at all. And quite the contrary, I think that it is it is a bit convenient, you know, to to have a have a gas station that provides what people might be looking for. It's right on El Camino Real, which is, you know, I consider it a commercial venue, if anything. And yet, you know, I always struggle when I hear liquor licenses. I I always struggle with the number of licenses that in the past have been, you know, provided in this community. So yeah, that's that's my only worry. I think that if this was a a different community, maybe past, for example, past Woods I rode into Redwood City, I I would consider that, you know, community not not the same as as North Fair Oaks. We have more vulnerabilities, particularly with the immigrant community that many times have issues, you know, mental and emotional health issues because of loneliness and, you know, it 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 gets way more complicated in communities like these than in the typical community where, you know, everything is normal.
On that note, is there a construction? I believe there is a facility for mental assistance, like it's a I'm not exactly sure what it is. It's like a residential area on, what's that? Just off of Fifth, right after the bridge. They built a whole new apartment, but I think it was supposed to be for.
The seniors, I think.
I don't think so.
The one on Selby, on Selby Lane?
Near La Quinta Pizza.
It's the yellow and quinta pizza and stuff like new one that's on.
Yeah.
And that.
It's a two-story.
Yeah, but I don't think it was a senior living. I thought it was for mental.
Yeah, yeah.
Like an outpatient or like assistance on that one. So.
Yeah, special needs residence.
Yeah. So I remember that coming up several years ago when they were building it. So is there a concern about more access or ability? I mean, again, I think it's less of a problem, given that there's already stores in the area. But again, we also don't want to have it turn into a whiskey bulge or something like that. So I'm assuming that future licenses would be coming back through this process again as well, right? But yeah, again, with that special needs community, is that something that we should be concerned about as well in that area?
I think something also to take into consideration, given the specific location of this, that it's in the corner of El Camino and Fifth Avenue, two major thoroughfares. A lot of people just going through, so it's not necessarily, you know, alcohol that's going to be, you know, that's going to stay in our community, whether it's pedestrian, bicycle or or vehicle, you know. I I think it's kind of a unique, you know, location. It's it's, you know, strictly in a commercial area with neighbors on both sides, across the street, all commercial. That's just something to just something to think about.
I don't want to make a judgment call about age or anything like that, but white clods are usually consumed by a much younger population than an older population. That concerns me. That is a very busy corner, very busy corner. We have, we we can have three, yet we have twelve licenses. And I think the last thing that bothers me a little bit is when we say convenience. I'm trying, I'm thinking about the other small businesses in that area that rely on customers. And we take customers away from them. We take customers away from the market. We take customers away from the liquor store. So there's an impact for them as well. So adding one more license, when we say creatures, we are creatures of convenience, but that doesn't always serve the business community all that well. Yeah, it'd be easy. Yeah, just make it. I don't have to stop. That's easy. But that impacts other small businesses. So from that standpoint, that bothers me. But I think also too, the fact that that is an incredibly busy corner. And those types beer and those types of seltzers are a much younger drink than, you know, buying a bottle of wine or you know, so that is a concern to me. And having had a beer and wine license at my previous my previous life, there's there's just challenges. There's just challenges constantly checking IDs. You've got kids that figure out how to get it. I just don't think when we say either necessity or convenience, I can make arguments for both. Yes, I agree from a libertarian standpoint. It's their business. They should be able to do it. Yeah, they've got the money. They can afford it. But is it really, really needed when we already have a good concentration of beer and wine sales in that area? And I do sympathize with other businesses that will suffer because it's convenient. So.
I've got a follow up question for Steve. What percentage of your locations already have liquor licenses?
About a third of them.
Do we want to pass on, sorry?
One one comment on on your point. I absolutely agree. There is definitely not a necessity on it. The convenience factor is where it's questionable is that it's definitely convenient, like we talked about, it's a high trafficked area and it's easy to go. And I'll I'll be honest, if it can reduce any of the traffic that messes up going into the Chavez or something like that, that actually works in my favor for convenience. But then do we want to make it super convenient to purchase alcohol to anybody is your question? And so I'm that's again, still on that still two minds where yes and no.
I I think we should neither support nor oppose it. Simply send it to the punt it to the board of supervisors with, we we don't strongly against it. We're not strongly for it. But we have a deliberation and the the council member's aide heard our thoughts and feelings and she can share it with them. But I don't think we have to take a stand on everything that comes up, but we do give it a hearing and talk about it.
Is the council comfortable with just passing on making any recommendation?
Sure. I guess, you know, ultimately we can vote on it and those who don't want to vote can abstain, you know. Yeah. And if the majority abstains, obviously, you know, there's no recommendation. But depending on that, I think there may be, you know, some some sort of outcome.
Okay, I say we vote that.
I'll second. I'm sorry, what's the motion?
Motion to to vote on whether or not we recommend to board of supervisors that, wait, hold on.
Why don't we just say I I I moved to recommend approval and then you get a second. And everyone that's against it says no, and everyone that's for it says yes.
Still learning. All right.
So I moved to recommend approval. Because I'm going to vote against it or neutral.
I I will second the motion.
I'm abstaining.
Is there a roll call vote or?
A roll call?
Which shirt works down?
Abstain.
Abstain, yes.
One council member, Walco, this product.
Abstain.
Councilmember, Robert Rodriguez.
One one question before that. So so there's already a recommendation to to approve, right?
Yeah, that's the motion.
That's a motion. Okay, yeah, no, I abstain.
So what? Let me ask one more question.
Yeah.
If there's a motion to approve and we're abstaining, does the abstinence vote, let's say we have more people abstaining.
There's a way to do it. We can withdraw the motion and say there's a motion to recommend not approving it and vote on that. I think that's what maybe ever is looking for.
Right, yeah, that was that.
That's where I'm getting, yeah.
Get out, because, you know, by abstaining, I may be voting, maybe voting yes.
That's what I'm figuring out now. That's what I'm trying to figure out if by abstaining, do we punt it off to the supervisor's office?
Happy to answer that question, please. My favorite question. In parliamentary procedure under Roberts Rules of Order, an abstention counts with the majority. However, however, public bodies in California generally require that all business be conducted by an affirmative vote of a majority of the members. So if a majority of the people in this room abstain from voting and only say four of you vote I, the motion fails because it does not carry a majority of the members. There will then immediately be in order another motion, either to table the item or to set the item aside, take no further action on it, take up the next item of business, and that would be interpreted in the record as being no action was taken.
You're good.
Or do the opposite recommendation of not.
Comes down to what the next motion is. Someone else vote is someone else moves to deny. And then you hold a vote on that and you fail to get a majority of I votes on the motion to deny. Then you're in the same position and you basically have determined that there is no majority vote for either of the two actions.
The next motion would probably be, do we want to punt it all?
Let's just put them both. This could be fun.
So we have two yeses and two abstained.
Should we get a yes?
I thought everybody abstained so far. Have you abstained, Juan Carlos?
Blair, you said yes.
No, I didn't say yes. I just made the motion. I was going to abstain too.
We stopped it ever.
That case, I'd I'd say no, just to balance things.
Councilmember Nick at Cersei.
I am going to vote I mostly because of allowance and it's not the lack of impact that I believe.
Councilmember Brooks Esser?
No.
Councilmember Blair Whitney?
I'm abstaining. Even though I made the motion.
Chair, Doug.
Vales five, two to one with the five extensions.
Three, three to one.
Do you want to make a motion?
Two no votes.
Three. Three.
Three no, ever, Brooks. Sorry.
Three no's, one yes, and then everyone else abstained.
So a new motion is now in order or you can take no action.
Recommend not approving?
Sure. Recommendation to not approve.
I'll second that.
Abstaining.
Councilmember, Juan Carlos.
Staying.
Councilmember, Nick at Cersei.
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Brooks Esser?
Yes.
Councilmember Blair Whitney?
Abstaining.
Yes.
Three yeses.
Mr. Wong.
Three yeses. I think. That's the majority of that.
No, it's a majority of the membership, so neither motion carried a majority of the of members' presence. So either you can take no further action or you can propose a motion to send this to board of supervisors with a neutral recommendation.
I think that's what we're doing. I I move that we refer this to the board of supervisors with a neutral recommendation.
That makes sense.
That's what it is.
Yeah. Agreed. Yep. Connie, it's on you.
Yeah. Was that a motion or? Oh, Blair made a motion.
Do we even need to vote on that?
Yes, you do.
Sorry.
All right. So we need a second on that. I'll vote in favor of it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a no. I'm a, I'm a no also.
Don't move it.
One, two, three.
Sorry, I'm a no, two no's. Recommend no action. I, I feel like our job is literally to tell the board of supervisors what to do about this. And by cutting it, we might be abrogating our responsibility on, on this thing. So I disagree with the idea of a neutral recommendation.
Very good point. I, that's why I voted the way. We are advisory to the board of supervisors and power is vested in them. So, but if we're going to vote no, these are good philosophical discussions.
Can someone help me out and what I should do next? Okay.
We need to complete the vote on the motion on the table.
Abstain.
The motion is to recommend a neutral, no recommendation to the board of supervisors for approval or denial.
We voted on both. We didn't get a majority on either.
Either one.
So we're acknowledging that and we're saying we're referring it to you. We can.
Right. And so at this time, it's a roll call vote again for this third motion. Correct?
Yeah. Okay.
There we go. Roll call.
Vice President.
I abstain.
Uh, councilmember Juan Carlos Prado?
No. No.
Uh, councilmember of Robert Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Nick at Cersei?
No.
Councilmember Brooks Esser?
No.
Councilmember Blair Whitney?
Yes.
Chair Catherine Darling?
No.
I'm guessing at this point we either reopen deliberations and, and talk a little bit amongst ourselves to make a move to go one way or the other, or we move to table it. Is that correct?
If we table it, break it up at a later date?
Or.
No, it moves on.
No, it moves on to board of supervisors.
Yeah. So it's essentially the same thing then.
So do you want to vote on table? We, we can deliberate a little more and then make another motion to, you know.
So I, I'd like to ask a little bit more of the council members who abstained. Why or what is the thought behind abstaining versus going one way or the other? Again, as I said, from my perspective, I can go either way on it, but I'm leaning more towards allowing the business to proceed, given that there already are liquor stores in the area, competition is healthy. They succeed or fail on their own in that space. Again, I do have concerns around the potential littering and other aspects around that one. But at the end of the day, the business is there to keep working and to keep doing it. They'll survive either way. But let's let them go ahead and, and manage the system as it is. And so there's not going to be that much of a detrimental impact on the area, given what's already there. And so that's why I was voting to approve the license.
I abstained because I'm on the fence of this one. I feel like I don't have enough data from a safety standpoint. From a business perspective, yes, let them run, you know? I'm very pro-business. Clarity is seeing how the area is around in a places, the issues that come with it. I just don't know. That's why I abstained. However, at what point do we say enough is enough? Like the whole point when we started this conversation, the question to us, what I remember was, we've already reached our limit. We've already maxed it out. We're now at 12 in the free liquor for the district. Question to us was, will this make the community area any better? That's what we were voting on. Does it make it any better? I don't know. From a convenience standpoint, business standpoint, yes. Am they littering an issue? I don't know.
That's the cleanest business in that whole intersection. It, it's probably going to hurt the liquor store by the Jack in the Box because they're overpriced and, you know, it, it's, it's going to improve the environment for liquor consumers. But I don't think it's going to bring light to the neighborhood. So I, if we did it, I'd vote in favor of it. But it's a hot button issue as far as, you know, we don't want flavored tobacco. We don't want sugary beverages.
Where are we stopping? Are we pushing everything out?
And I, I kind of want to be kind of revolutionary, like it's okay. It's legal. You're not repealing prohibition. Let's acknowledge that adults are going to drink and just check their ID and do it in a nice, clean, safe, well lit area. So.
Why aren't we allowed flavored tobacco? Like what?
The nanny state because it attracts the youth market and it's a gateway drug to lifetime dependency of nicotine as opposed to alcohol, which is healthy for you to consume. No.
So that's my grandfather, George Malcolm.
Yeah, I gue- I guess at some point, what we need to think, you know, as representatives of the community is what is, what is enough, you know, for this community? Like, and let's, let's take a different example, not liquor stores, which was plenty. But for example, let's take auto mechanic shops, we, which we also have sufficient. So if that was a matter, obviously, I mean, it's, it's not bad. Automotive shops, but if we were getting flooded, would there be a point in which we would say, okay, maybe that's enough. Maybe we need a grocery store, you know, instead of another auto shop, whatever, auto mechanic. And I guess in, in this case, it's also, you know, like you were mentioning the, the number 12 already. And I guess at some point we need to start thinking, okay, if, if that sounds like too many for the number that, that's allotted, then maybe it is too many.
But is that the average? Like we say, for this census data, we're supposed to be at three, we're at 12. Is that what most, are most communities way above their numbers too? Or because the state's number is too low? Like what, what baseline are we using as our, as our delta to say we're too high or too little? If we're already above at 12, does anyone have any numbers to say, yeah, most communities around, or most communities in Matteo have already exceeded their numbers?
From my, from what I understand, i- it depends on the community. We happen to be a mixed commercial, even industrial and res- and of course presidential. And so thi- this is why we're having this dilemma. Because we're trying to, to where the, the residential, I, this is my neighborhood, but also, hey, I'm a business owner. I'm, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult situation because we're a mixed use community and we're trying to, you know, be fair to everyone and keep, keep what's best in mind. And, and so that goes to what you're saying. Yes, there, there is more concentration, but we have these commercial thoroughfares, you know, of, of El Camino, of, of Fifth Avenue. And Fifth Avenue is a very much mixed use. You have blocks, it's commercial, you have blocks that are residential. And then of course, Middlefield Road. So, I mean, yes, there's a large concentration because we have these major thoroughfares. So.
So let's say we vote yes on this today and it gets approved. Someone comes in next week and says, hey, on middle through fifth, I want to put a liquor store there. Someone comes a week after, I want to put another liquor store. Where's our thought process of, of where we're going with this?
That's one of the reasons I went back and looked at, you know, state limits and things like that. And it's no secret. We have quite a few liquor stores in North Fair Oaks relative to our population. And I use the state guideline. I believe it's a guideline of one per 2,500 residents. In theory, we should have at most six, seven liquor stores in our community. We have 12 in the census tract and I believe throughout the entire community because North Fair Oaks covers, I believe, at least two census tracts in full, perhaps a third, we're over 20. So we're, we're well supplied with liquor stores. And that was my, that was my logic in this thing. It becomes a ratio of liquor stores per capita. I don't know how we got to where we are now, but I think at some point we need to say that's enough for our community.
I've been on here since like 2017 or 2018. This has never come up before. So all the existing ones are grandfathered. They're reinvesting. They rebuilt the gas station. It's reasonable to look for like a little bit more of a profit margin. But we never had a say about that liquor store by the Jack in the Box. I, I, I would actually almost take the wine store out of the equation because that's a whole different demographic. People, they're all, they drive up and they get their cases of wine and then they go home and have their dinner party. That's all. That's totally different than the liquor store crowd or the gas station beer crowd. We, we got a lot of pass through business. People going over to March Road, people going north and south. I, this isn't Compton. This isn't the Tenderloin. It doesn't feel like it. And I don't think voting yes or no is going to make a difference on this.
I, I would say that I think part of the issue is I, if it was a pure liquor store, I'd probably be more against it given the fact that it is more an additional to things that you already get into like a grocery and more like a grocery store. Um, I'm a little bit more in favor of that. To the question around, you know, how much you're, how much do we say enough is enough? I think it really is going to be a case by case basis on where it is, what they're providing, what's the benefit to the community. And in this case, it's again, it's more just adding on to a little bit of an existing area as opposed to you know, a full on liquor store or like something like that where it's like, like another one, like the one behind the Jack in the Box. And then the, I guess the other question is for the other 12 liquor licenses that are already existing, how many of them are pure liquor stores versus other bodegas or little grocery outlet things that already have it? So they're just doing the same thing. And so it's just another small area or whatever it is. So I don't know what that, that is. And I don't know if we have the data on that and how much of it's.
I can speak to that a little bit. Let me just pull it up.
That would be helpful.
I will say that the same corporation, the team and his team, they've already actually applied for a PCN in 2013 and got denied. This is their second time trying to get a license. The last license I got approved from the board was in 2015 because there was a PCN and that actually this is one out of, that business went out of business. So they no longer have that. So I just a five for you guys. Let me give you the information on the other stuff.
And so, Nick, and you know, I guess thinking about your last comment, ultimately, I, I believe that a liquor, liquor license, it, it is what it is regardless of whether you sell, you know, only wine or partially, you know, only beer or, you know, only alcoholic drinks with food as in a restaurant, et cetera. Uh, but ultimately I believe the, the type of license may be the same.
If, so is that like, for example, the Chavez market, if they sell beer, would they also have to have a liquor license for that?
Yeah, they're probably one of your 12. And there's like three restaurants that have beer and wine.
Right.
Yeah, that are.
Like, I mean, on, on, on premise consumption is different. So I'm thinking like, like, so the Chavez behind already has that same license there. So it's not like it's, and I guess to me, the, a person who, if we don't approve the license, somebody could just go to the Chavez, literally get the exact same thing right behind it. So all of this is doing is just splitting that person. Cause they're not going to go from the loop to Chavez and, and buy the same thing in multiple places. Right? So all it's doing is it's the same population is just diverting it to another store. It's not like we're adding or increasing sales of liquor and consumption there. It's just, it's, it's diverting the existing traffic is what I'm thinking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just answered your question. 10 of the 15 licensed NFO are liquor stores.
Purely liquor stores?
Five of them are like half, like a store with the addition of the liquor.
That's interesting.
Oh, sorry. Well, Chavez, sorry. Sorry. Let me take that back. Eight of them, not counting Chavez. Chavez is like a market.
Of 15, you mean 12 or 15?
So there's 15 in NFO, the three NFO license, the, the tracks that we have for NFO, there's 15 and 12. So. Eight of them are liquors, like hard, like liquor.
Pure liquor store.
Yeah. And then the rest are market.
North Fair Oaks is, those three census tracts are exclusive to North Fair Oaks. So add those three together and you get 14,000 or whatever for 2020. Okay.
So we have to move along here. We're going to be here all night if we don't. So we can just, I, I don't feel that I've not met an obligation as a councilperson to just send it up to the supervisors. I feel like we've had a great discussion. Connie can relay the information back to supervisor, President Slocum. And they will do what they do, which is decide. I think, I don't think we're going to reach a consensus here other than we could keep talking about it and not get a good answer. And, but I don't, I do not feel that I've not met my obligation by not sending.
In that case, I just, I'd move, I'd move to send an approval for this. Once again, so we can re-vote, see if anybody's changed their mind. And if nobody has, then maybe again, we just table it or not. That'd be my, my thought process.
That work for everyone?
Okay.
Okay.
One more second. All right. I move that we send an approval recommendation to the board of supervisors.
A second on that? There. Take a devote?
Abstain.
Councilmember Juan Carlos Prado?
No.
Councilmember Everado Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Nick at Cersei?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks Esser?
No.
Councilmember Blair Whitney?
Abstaining.
Chair Catherine Darling?
No.
Oh, we tried.
Do we want to go the other way?
No, I think I.
We got four no's.
Yeah.
I, I, there's only seven of us, but you already went.
I, I call that we move the agenda and get to the next item.
So the result is that we're not sending a recommendation at all or?
No. I believe that the, the recommendation was denied.
So the motion was to approve.
Approved, yeah.
So that got denied. So do we do another one with the motion to deny, to recommendation to deny?
I don't know. I don't think it's.
Usually I don't do this, but it seems like we're kind of struggling here.
Please.
Well, cause two, two abstains started voting this time instead, right? So we may have, if, if that's changed, I understand, but usually it's the discretion of the chair about whether or not to call the next agenda item. I would just recommend that you call the next agenda item.
I think.
And the record is what it is for the supervisors to see how the council feels about it. I just, I'm not hearing that there are votes shifting in direction of having.
We did have a healthy discussion and this is important.
Proud of that and now we'll move on.
Because it's the majority of them, not the majority of those voting present.
Oh, oh, okay.
So we did.
So how many times we vote?
Three.
Three.
Well, four.
Four. Felt like seven or 10.
Thank you, everybody.
Direct at the board of supervisors.
Okay. Moving on to item number four, update on, good update on the Mercy Affordable Housing Project known as Middlefield Junction, 2,700 Middlefield Road, River City. And we have project manager Elaine.
Palacio.
Palacio, beautiful. Okay. I'll hear it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Elaine Palacio, this is project manager on behalf of Mercy Housing. We are working down the street at Littlewood Junction. So just a quick recap. So we're Mercy Housing. Our, our office is in San Francisco. Our team is with Bar Architects. And then our general contractor is Robert Obiashi. We are being sponsored and funded by San Mateo County, our local partners, El Consilio of San Mateo County. And our property manager, manager is gonna be Mercy Housing Management Group. And Mercy Housing California is in here, so. So overview, it's a hundred and seventy nine units of family housing. Forty eight of those are gonna be one bedrooms, eighty one are gonna be two bedrooms. Fifty of those will be three bedrooms, we are marketing for a fifteen to eight percent AMI. And twenty of those units will also be reserved for formerly homeless. This project consists of two buildings, um, one is five stories, housing over podium with parking structure. The other is four stories, um, housing over commercial and a community space. Um, commercial space will be a childcare center, eleven hundred square feet. That is an early education center that's focused mainly on toddlers and infants. Adjacent to it, um, will be an outdoor play area that will be servicing the childcare center. And we envision it being for thirty infants and toddlers and it's gonna be operated by, um, installed family service. As mentioned, we also have a community space about three thousand square feet. This is an open community space for the actual whole community that can be rented out. And we, um, will function also as a flexible space for programmatic, um, situations within the local community and beyond. We also have multiple open spaces that include closets and a muse in between two buildings. And some community, um, garden beds and dedicated outdoor space for children. Currently, um, we have a point seventy five space per unit. And that also includes the childcare drop off and pickup, and there is our community space. So this is just a quick summary of the breakdown of AMIs to the band count ratio.
Sorry, can you go back to that one? So that's the AMI.
Yeah.
What does that equate to roughly rent per unit?
If you go to the next slide, provided, a quick summary at the bottom of the rent range. Range a lot because fifteen to eighty percent AMI is quite big. So you can get a one bedroom for as low as, um, a thousand forty five, up to two thousand seven hundred. Two bedrooms, one thousand two hundred, or to three thousand, three thousand three hundred and four six. And then a three bedroom, as low as one thousand one hundred and forty, up to three thousand, three thousand eight hundred. So everything's, um, anchor qualified, so it depends where they fall, and, um, yeah.
But for, for all the, it's not a percentage, all the residents there are considered low income even though there's different structure to that?
Yes.
Okay, so none of the units are retail, full retail rental market?
Well, technically the childcare is retail or it's a commercial space.
Okay, that would be the only thing.
That's the only.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So quick overview of the schedule, we have started construction already, it started in June. Last year we are anticipating completion in May twenty twenty five. We intend to start marketing for these up in September of this year. With Lisa processes starting as early as December of this year, and going all the way to May twenty twenty five, we're anticipating. This is an overall site plan, so we are working all the way from Middlefield, working our way back inside, next slide. Of the two buildings, we're calling building closer to the Fair Oaks Health Center, building B closer to the Fair Oaks. So overall, towards the north, uh, we're gonna have some sunset terraces, which is on the second level. And then the central courtyard within building B with some mixed seating and a play area. Outdoor kitchen and that's where we're, how is the community garden in building A close to the health center. That's where the childcare is gonna be located closest to, um, the healthcare center. And next to it, the childcare outdoor play area. And then between two buildings, there is the pedestrian muse, which is outdoor flex space that one could allow seating. Others, like these items, this side. So this is just a more detailed plan of the ground level, just indicating orange is childcare. Then the lobby and social areas, and then on the other side, building B, um, mainly housing with structured parking space. Next slide. And I thought I'd show the first level, which is where the housing starts. So as you can see, a lot of them are one bedrooms, and that pattern continues all the way through, next slide. So these are the three D renderings provided by our architect. So this is looking at the building from the health center, so you're seeing, um, the lobby and then the childcare center, next slide. And then same side of the building, but you're getting a better view of the childcare, which is the glazing portion, next slide. That's a view, um. West, uh, looking down the muse between the two buildings. That is the community center, community garden, sorry, um, closest to Medical Road, next slide. And then the entry plaza. Breaking down what we're thinking of the programmatic, um, layout of the entry plaza would be. Which as I mentioned, there's birotention planters, um, there will be thermally modified wood, integral color concrete, saving, um. Some lighting and, and a lot of birotention. And then that's the terrace closest to the Caltrain Station in building B. That's where we are right now, um, as of, it's kind of when I got in, uh, so we're basically popped up. Right now, we are actually adding the TPO, we had our pre-con meeting yesterday. We have also fully, um, installed all the windows, we passed on inspections today, everything is great, next slide. So we are in full, we're cruising, we are, as mentioned, forty two percent complete here and fifty by the end of June. This is building B closest to the Caltrain, that shows more progress, um, from keeping scale of the TPO installation. Shots, um, one on the right is where that sunset, um, terrace is gonna be and the stage of that. Uh, I do wanna remind all that we do have a website that we're constantly updating with your past questions. And we do have a monthly newsletter there, and there is a contact fill form that you guys can fill out. Or anyone can fill out to join any, to join a mailing list to get some updates. Questions?
Could you, could you leave the previous slide on so that, thank you.
There's a swimming pool. No, it's got, it's a beautiful project, looks like it has everything.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I have a question. When this came up years ago, um, my first question was, can we make sure that there is a priority given to people that live and work in North Fair Oaks? Because we're facing displacement as gentrification creeps up. And at the time, I was told it's gotta be open to all San Mateo County residents.
Right.
But then I pointed to Palo Alto, which does have a restriction that you either have to live or work at Palo Alto, and I said, well, if they can do it, why can't we do it? And I didn't get a satisfactory answer. So I'm gonna ask again and keep asking, because if they can do it, we can do it, it is legal. And, uh, the answer that was given previously was, we, we have a displacement problem. And adding affordable housing, but then filling it with a bunch of people from all over. It doesn't necessarily help our community, so I wanna make sure that we're keeping a promise and faith to our constituents in North Fair Oaks. That this is for them, not just coming in to share space with them. So is there gonna be a priority given, at least for a number of spots? That you either work or live in North Fair Oaks currently, and that you can jump to the top of this list because, you know.
So in terms of us as developers and property managers, we have to abide by, um, fair housing laws. So we as developers do not designate or have preferences on, who we can use to, it is to San Mateo County. But we are working with San Mateo County, um, Housing Department. And they themselves can put those restrictions and preferences and impose those onto us. We are right now in conversation with San Mateo County to discuss the lease up process. So I can't currently provide you concrete information on how we're using that, but we are envisioning and trying to focus in this community and working backwards. So each department writes and, but us as Mercy, we can't do that because of the fair housing laws.
And I follow, the Housing Authority of the County of San Mateo is a public agency, it's under the Board of Supervisors. But they're not looking out for the best interest of North Fair Oaks at all times. So I, we need to continue to agitate to make sure that we're included, because left to their own devices, they're just, they're not gonna make any priority for our residents that are continuing to be rapidly displaced by gentrification.
That's a great point, Larry, and, yeah, we should really keep an eye on that, for sure.
Yeah, and through the chair, I think that's, uh, that's been a struggle since, um, the beginning. Uh, I participated in some of the, um, initial meetings with Mercy Housing along with, um, folks from El Consilio. Which is partnering with you. And, and, uh, so we, we started creating a list of residents that would be interested in, you know, remaining housed here in North Fair Oaks. Which by the way, by the way, El Consilio should have. And I'm hoping that, you know, they're still, um, continuing with that, with that list. Just in case there's an opportunity, um, to prioritize, um, members of this community for, for housing. And, but I think that, um, to Blair's point, um, so, uh, Palo Alto can do it because they are unincorporated city. And for us, since we are unincorporated, so we are, you know, we're part of the whole county. And, and I guess that's, you know, that's, that's the reason behind why, you know, um. This needs to be open to the entire county and not just, um, strictly here. But there may be a couple of alternatives, like, like you said, you know, we were in discussion early on. And that, that is the hope that people from this community can, can benefit from that. The, one of the questions I had was, um, do you, do you have a sense that the project is on schedule to finalize when, in twenty twenty five?
Yeah, so we're envisioning completion in May twenty twenty five. We have about a two week delay right now because of the very challenging rains we have, uh, that back. But, um, with from caught up, so, and the past caller testing that we thought were challenging on our windows. Um, so that basically brought us back to about six days behind schedule. And I'm pretty sure as we keep speeding on, uh, we'll get back on schedule. So there is a tiny bit of delay, but I do expect us to stay on schedule.
Okay, and my second question is, uh, I know that, um, Mercy Housing began with this project before the pandemic. And then the pand- the pandemic, you know, kind of halted the whole thing. Has there anything changed in terms of the plans, the architectural plans? Or is the project remaining, uh, pretty much the same?
Yeah, um, the project is remaining pretty much the same. The only shift, which is very minor, is that we found an unregistered pipe that went in right at the edge of the property. That made us lose a bit of square footage of our building, we had to basically chop off a part. So we worked with TPW, got that all resolved, but didn't affect any of our spaces, didn't affect our unit count or anything. Just a shift of aesthetic on that particular corner of the site, but beyond that, I think it's the same.
Great, um, and so the, the website, um, if people subscribe, um, by filling out the contact, uh, form. And joining your mail list, mailing list, would they be notified when, um, uh, the opportunity comes up to apply?
Yes, that's our main purpose of it, first is to answer any questions in the community, to actually come to my inbox, so I'm answering them personally. So I answer everything that comes my way, um, and then it's also to last the team of like, hey, you're a projector, lease up, share marketing materials. And then educate those that need help on how to fight a poor housing, because it is a pretty tedious process, so. We have a team in place for that.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, so once the project is complete, you will be managing the property? My question to that is, uh, what efforts, uh, will be, um, be made by your management company? To use local, uh, businesses and contractors to keep up the facilities?
So general practice is a mercy, um, we try to focus and involve community within the community. So we do, we do focus on local labor, um, but sometimes they can be challenging for some of the things. But we do strive to adopt as much of the local businesses and community workers as possible.
Okay, because.
But I can't, it's hard to guarantee.
No, of course, yeah, I just kind of go along with the lines of what he's saying about the residents also for the business, such a large project. Uh, especially for North Fair Oaks, um, that, um, I, I am interested how many local businesses? Because we do have so many businesses that are in so many different trades. You know, not just in the construction phase, but also long-term maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we do in our properties in San Francisco, we reach out to local businesses, restaurants, and we have events in our buildings, uh, activities. We, that's a practice we already have and implement in our projects, so I don't see this type of.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Mercy Housing, yeah, thank you.
Looks like, very funny, if, if, if it turns out to be a great success, could you build another one?
Yeah.
In the next five years or so?
Oh, I would love to, it's been a great project, as a person that was born and raised in Rowan City, I'm very proud to be working, so I'd love to do another project. Um, but San Mateo County Househead is the most difficult thing they've ever done, so. But I can't promise anything, I'd love to though, for sure.
Any other questions, comments, any public comment today?
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
I can get your contact. Call the chat when you want.
Yeah.
Okay, we will then move on to item number, we're skipping, as we said, skipping five and moving on to six. And that is a motion to approve the North Fair Oaks Community Council Priorities and Work Plan. We met a study session, um, came up with the three top things, um, that, um, council members thought were, what they wanted us to focus on. Also been in a conversation with Connie and President Slocum. And, um, we came up with three, addressing parking constraints, um, throughout North Fair Oaks. Uh, developing a North Fair Oaks Small Business Development Association. And opportunities for more trees and green space are the three things that we will focus on, so we just, we'll need to look at that. There are individual presentations for each of these, I know we are running, um, a little bit behind schedule. But, um, I have a few slides, actually Mariella, um, is going to be heading up the, um, Business Association. But she was swamped today and could not make it tonight, so I have her slides, I worked with her on them. And so I can present those, but first one up is George, addressing some parking.
Absolutely.
Constraints, so.
Do you wanna pop the presentation up?
Yeah.
I guess my portion of its, all two slides, I can't just read to it.
Okay, I'll go with the copy here, people give this one second.
I think they can help share this group.
No, no, she's, she's.
She's able to, she's able to.
George, go ahead and use your paper.
In the interest of time.
Yeah.
It's only two slides, it's fairly simple. Essentially, we all know we have a big parking problem at NFO. The goal here is to try to find some out of the box solutions to try to remedy, remedy this. Some of them being finding smaller interim lots that county can either lease or purchase. Or maybe we can negotiate with, with, with current owners. But the goal I really want to achieve here to really find out where the problem is, is to take a data-driven approach to all this. And that's more to work with the Sheriff's Office to gather data on some of the main parking complaints, where locations are, the actions they're currently taking, the hours that these parking issues are happening, and potential solutions that they want to work with. Also, as we work with the community and start walking up and down Middlefield for some of our surveys, for other things, I want to chat with businesses and better understand their parking needs. Is it even a parking issue on the business side? Is it on the residential side? Where is the actual challenge we're trying to, what's the problem we're trying to resolve here? And take another deeper dive into the potential permitting program that we'd already reviewed in the past. We'll just kind of give that a second look and, and see, maybe there's some bits and pieces of it that we can take away, that we might be able to try to implement, but just kind of give that a second cut. That's essentially what I want to use to gather information. An ultimate goal, of course, all of these are going to require financial resources, which at the moment, we don't have a budget. So I want to take all this data, look for a potential solution, whether it be a parking structure on Middlefield or elsewhere, and go back to our board and see if we can get something budgeted.
Niket, do you want to go? We'll just give it to you and then we'll jump back to me.
Is it possible to get sharing permission?
Uh, yeah, can you promote Niket?
So, yeah. Beginning. So, yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about the, our Green Committee kind of working on the green spaces and trees. Very quickly, the goal for this is to promote the growth and preservation of the tree camp in green spaces in the North Fair Oaks region. Very self-aware, I'll explain it right there. Some key objectives that I was, we were considering or others I was considering is to review and provide input on the tree ordinances. We just received that from a planning commission, so Kelly and I are looking into that right now. Additionally, objectives I'm looking into are promoting the awareness, kind of building the awareness for the trees, making sure people want to have the trees in the area. That's, which have been a problem that's come up in multiple previous sessions and stuff where there's not that awareness of that. Ideally speaking, I'd love to reduce the requests to remove the trees, whether they're permitted or unpermitted in both cases to do that. And then also work to figure out how we can help advise streamlining some of that process and make sure that when the permits are, permit process happens, that there is accurate and relevant information on, on that process as well. So more on writing guidelines and recommendations is kind of the goal of this. Metrics we look at are events that we can attend and how many engagements do we have at these events? As well as the tree permit removals and see how they're going. So there's some refinement going to happen on this. Right now, it's just me officially, Kelly is unofficially on the team. If anybody else wants to volunteer, I would be happy to take on and have discussions for that as well. Thank you.
Go ahead and turn the screen. Okay, so kind of a work plan, there's, there's a little bit of duplication here, but bear with me, next slide. Okay, just a plug, but I will come back to that when we do report outs, just in the wrong order. Okay, so the plan then, a work plan, is to launch a small business association, address the parking challenges on Middlefield Road and other areas, and then look at trees, parks, and green spaces. But that is our work plan going forward. The Business Association is what I'm going to focus on. Unfortunately, Mariella could not make it tonight, but our goal is to really build some trust amongst the business community on Middlefield Road. As we all know, with the road improvements, we, we have some issues, we have some concerns. And, and I think the one thing to do is go back out there and just build some trust with people. We're not looking for numbers, and I know even for a small business owner, sharing a lot of information and data about your sales and stuff like that are not things that we're looking for. We're just looking to understand their issues and not much about their individual, individual day-to-day business. Kind of came up with what the North Fair Oaks Business Association designed. It's designed to bring small business owners together to form a powerful voice for the community surrounding North Fair Oaks and Middlefield Road. North Fair Oaks has deep roots in San Mateo County. The business owners in North Fair Oaks are vital to the community, and the association is being formed to strengthen and support the efforts of the owners and their employees. The association, association will be designed so that the businesses can share up-to-date information, connect with other business owners, and open up a dialogue for topics that they care about in the local business community. That's sort of the goal of what we're trying to do. By building trust, and we need to talk to them, engage them, and we need some questions answered. So we'll go door-to-door, one to two council members, and we'll talk about who wants to be on that. We took it away from it being a subcommittee or ad hoc committee because we really feel like the entire council will benefit from some of those door-to-door conversations. So we'll be just looking to team up with each other and get out there. And it's my understanding that there will possibly be someone in the new office on Middlefield Road, and that person will be helping as well. That's kind of the plan. Okay, so the kind of the questions that we're going to answer or things we're looking at are what type of business? What's their history, their challenges? Determine their interest in that storefront beautification project that we talked about. All businesses are beautiful, but some of them could use a little paint touch-up, little things like that. Understand the Middlefield Road parking challenges and review and collect any additional needs. So these next slides are really just the information we'll be gathering, and it's really just a list. Obviously, all the contact information. From there, we want to look at what challenges they face. What problems do they have with running their businesses, customer? Is, do they need support, zoning issues, employment? And then are there any regulations in their business model that negatively affect their business? Be interesting to know. Then other questions, and hopefully just to once again engage in conversation, what would they hope the Business Association could do for them? And then I think it's going to be important to know just percentages about customers. Do they walk? Do they drive? Do they ride a bike? Do they take public transportation? What about their employees? Do they walk to work? Do they drive? Do they live in North Fair Oaks? How many ride a bike? How many take public transportation? I think just having that data will be helpful, especially as, you know, we learn more about establishing bike lanes and traffic patterns and things like that. I think it'd be important to know, like, who are their customers? Are they people walking or are they seeing more traffic as time goes on? Have they lost business due to lack of parking? Those kind of things are be important. And then we will ask the question, are they interested in any of the cosmetic front-facing upgrades that we've been kind of floating around, trying to make sure happen? For example, a fresh coat of paint. And are there any other issues with their physical space? And is, I'm curious to know if their landlord's helpful, do they help them take care of the building? Or is it always, always just up to them? As a small business owner, those kinds of things can run into big amounts of money and make it tough. And then to understand where they park, the business owners park, where do their employees park? Do they have any additional space? I still have that dream that I'm going to find one of those car lots that they're going to give up and help us put some parking in there. Kind of want to know if they've seen improvements since Middlefield Road has been completed? And are there any negative consequences? And then I think it's important to know, since we've got Renaissance and Job Train now on, on Middlefield Road, have they reached out? Are they talking to them? Are they getting the help that they need? Can we help make some introductions? If not, sort of floated around, and it's totally just to look at, but is there any economic opportunity zone for North Fair Oaks? Are there any capital gains, tax-free statuses, lower tax breaks, environmental health fees? Types of challenges, things that businesses face? Just curious to know, are, how, how are they challenged by those kinds of things? Yeah, do the food street vendors affect their business? Does it impact financial, positive or negative? We've heard that, we know the county's been working on that, but then we've heard that when, after five or after six or when, when it, when no one's really outworking that much, things change. And the, the, the street vendors do show up and no one's regulating them because it's after seven o'clock and everyone at home. And this was another one, are there any bulk buying opportunities for a collective group of businesses? And do businesses need help on lease options, right of first refusal, how to negotiate a new lease? And basically, what we're asking in these questions is not that we as a council can answer those questions, but maybe we can start putting together a package, resources for them, direct them in different places. So kind of putting together perhaps like a notebook of information for them. And then we talked about the parking challenges that George is going to take up. So I'm looking at getting the data and a first meeting no later than gathering all the data and hopefully getting a first associate, association meeting. Sorry, I'm moving ahead, I'm not telling you. You can go to next steps, keep going. I'd like to get our first meeting going by July and then have the data and information all together by the end of September. The Middlefield Road, it's kind of an ongoing, we know, but to get some of the information that George is looking for by August. And I'm leaving community engagement, it was a conversation that we did have last week. I'm leaving it on my list, so that's just a note that, that's really important to me. And I think that we had, we came up with some really cool ideas. We didn't make it a priority, but I'm going to leave it as a priority for me, just me personally, but just to let you know what that is. And that would be just some door-to-door communication, a little bit broader area of North Fair Oaks. The one thing that I think we all have talked about, but I think the commitment that we need to make is we all need to do some door knocking. We really do. We can learn a lot in conversation. We know we're, we know we're up against challenges as being an unincorporated area, but I think the more information we have, the more we can really be a strong council and meet the needs of the residents and businesses. My presentation, so I guess we will need to vote that we all accept this plan. I'm comfortable with it, but first open for discussion, questions, comments?
Make a motion that we approve the work plan for 2024. Second.
Hi.
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 You finally got George. Finally built the courage.
All right. We have work to do, people.
Getting that covered.
Yeah. Moving on then, a public comment for that, is there any public comment? Anyone online? Nope, okay. All right, moving on. Report out.
County Executive type person?
County Executive? Is anyone online?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. District four, county, you're up.
Yes, I have a couple of things to report out. Just some quick approvals of Measure K that the district approved, either the previous board meeting or this past board meeting. So we did give out funds to Sunrisse Dental, which is going to help fund dental screenings to, to students in a school setting as well as our older adults. I think they're our most vulnerable community for that. We also, with District Three, also funded BUDSMAN, and that's a long-term care facility. We also finished out the funds, releasing the funds to Planned Parenthood, and that was after the Dobbs decision in 2022. And we also partnered with District Five on the Komo Veterans Village Shuttle. That'll give, help access some of our, what's that word? Some of our veterans who have ability challenges. We also passed and had the second reading of our equity ordinance. And that what, that is to promote racial and social equity, inclusion and belonging, and establish responsibilities for county officers and employees, discharging their public responsibilities. And with, oh, sorry, that's pretty much what that equity ordinance will be. I also just want to mention that we do have some, some events in North Fair Oaks in June. So get ready for our busy June. We do have our cleanup day on June 15. Please, council members, sign up and bring at least 10 people with you. Possible, we currently only have 10 sign-ups, and so we want to make sure that we get more people to sign up to help, you know, keep NFO beautiful. We also then have the Fire Works Buyback Event that we also helped fund the Sheriff's Office. And we'll have that event on Saturday, January, I'm sorry, Saturday, June 29 at the Sheriff's Office in downtown River City. And then we have disaster preparedness, our pillowcase project with the North Brooks Library here on June 22. So you can join us. And we just want to also update you guys that the Sheriff's Oversight Committee is, and I think the committee is moving along. And I believe some of the approvals went out and will come to the board, I believe, in June. And then the last thing, please sign up for a newsletter just so you can stay in touch and up to date on all of the things that are coming to the district and has been going on. And just because County Executive isn't here, I will let you guys know that with the Maldonado issue that came to the council a couple of weeks ago, or probably a month ago, the county is working on that. And we will eventually hopefully find a solution for that. So just want to let you guys know.
Sorry, please repeat that, the.
The Maldonado one about the parking. That's all I have.
Thank you, Connie.
With the, you think county on a community festival this year, is that a go, no go?
As of now, I think the district will not be moving forward with that. Just because of the, the governor's budget that came out last week and the deficit that we're in and the fact that we're losing the, of the L F funds. The district doesn't feel that spent, the budget for that was 15K. And if we don't think that investing 15K in a festival is going to be the best for our community, and we'd rather find ways that we can invest in our community just because of those funds.
It's a big hole in the budget.
As of now, it.
Forty, fifty million, something like that.
You're the chair.
Oh, no, thank you. I think Connie reported out from the CEO's office is that we are working with the small business community, not exclusive to the Maldonados. not exclusive to the Maldonados, but to small businesses where the the discussed parking and the bust stops at any impacts that it might have. So County Deputy County Executive Justin Mates and Deputy Director Kristoff from the Department of Public Works will be going in person to speak with many of those small businesses communities. So I did want to give a report out about that.
Thank you. We wrapped up then. Okay, Blair, anything to report tonight?
I would say no report, but I see that daily marijuana use outpaces daily drinking in the US in the newspaper. So we got 15 or 12 liquor licenses, but no dispensaries. I mean, never mind.
An all out flavored tobacco.
Carlos, anything?
No, other than the the Casa Circo Cultural, which is our big profit and, you know, great organization, is having a big fundraiser at the Hillary Aviation Museum. St. Carlos is a big annual event, which will be June, Thursday, June 6. So if anybody would like to go to the dinner fundraiser, it'll be at 6:00 PM, June 6. Well, I'll be participating.
Ever, anything?
Yeah, just another plugin for El Consilio, which is an organization that has been ongoing for about 40 years. And they have an office right here in North Fair Oaks over on Middlefield Road between Fourth and Fifth. And, you know, it's sometimes it's hard to find it. But they're they're going through renewal. And and they're going to have an open house on June the 13th, I believe it's that Thursday, in the evening from from 5:00 to 7:30. They're going to be unveiling a small bureau that they will be painting inside their their premises, they own they own their their house. So that's a nice thing for a nonprofit these days, because, you know, they don't have to pay rent, they don't have to move away. So everyone is invited for this open house to come and meet, you know, some of the staff June 13 from 5:00 to 7:30. So everyone is welcome to come by, say hi, and that's it.
Niket, anything to report? I guess I'm next. On June 15, we need your help. You really do. And we also need help, and I walked out of the house without them. Flyers out to the community, so I may be reaching out, trying to get an address for you to drop some flyers at your home so that we can keep going, getting them out. And I apologize, I forgot them tonight, but really need your help on June 15.
Good question. The June 15, you know, what exactly is, is like we people bring stuff to a place or?
We're still working through the the actual details right now. It's just to get together the volunteers and see what we can do. I will ask if anyone has access to a pickup truck or would mind spending, I don't know, U-Haul $60 for the day? That would be really helpful if the council could. I know I'm going to rent one. If you have an extra $60, that would be a nice thing to do because we, as we work through the logistics, it may be that will be there is a recology truck, we know for sure, but instead of doing drop off points, now recology wants to bring a truck. So we're going to need to figure out how we get all that, and the logistics are still being worked out.
So again, it's basically there's people put everything that they want to get rid of in one spot, and then the truck will come and pick it up.
Yeah, I I was hopeful that that this community cleanup would not just be litter collection, walking, but I really like to see people be able to get rid of those things in the yard that they cannot get to recology. They don't have access to, you know, the ability for recology to twice a year cleanup kind of thing. And you could just walk through North Fair Oaks, and you can see where people have things that they just can't get rid of. So I want to make it a little bit bigger than just litter pickup.
In in past years, there was a guy with the pickup, and we would walk in teams, we would bag up stuff like orange bags, and they would empty that, but then we'd find like an old filing cabinet in a Nordic track in the bushes, half in the sidewalk, half in the yard. It's like, let's get rid of this. And we call the guy with the pickup, and it gets moved at least to the central point wherever a college dude would take it. It'd be great if we get to doing that again, because the dumping kind of builds up over a couple of years. It's not terrible right now, but if there's like a community wide sense of pride, like this is our chance to like clean up, not just our own front yard or my house or my apartment complex, but that stuff in the vacant lot down the block that people have been dumping. I'm going to post on Nextdoor a couple of times, and I'll volunteer that day. It's a good event.
Then through the chair, through Infogee, I can get, you know, a few trucks to do the pickup and just gather it together with recology needs it to be. There's also going to be food provided by the Sheriff's Office, or, you know, that's always always nice to have.
That should be on the flyer.
Yeah. And, you know, they have good barbecue, so it's a plus.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a great opportunity to meet other, you know, neighbors.
And the the young people that are with Sal, the sheriff's, politically, they're just great. They're just fired up to do this. Would you agree? Yeah. Yeah, so it'll be fun, but more information is coming, and just we can get it out as soon as we can.
Yeah, and pretty much everything would be provided, like, you know, one of those trash litter pickups and gloves, trash bags, etc. You just have to show up.
Yeah. Okay, George, anything?
Nothing that has already been discussed.
Here, Mariella and how about you? Okay, well, look, 9:02.
That's even dropping one of the agenda.
See if I did this right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Hi.
Thank you, guys. Great.
Thank you very much.